Flag salute please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, August 26th. We'll start with a budget discussion. Susan, you have the floor.
I've been working with Brandon on some suggestions for to get to lovey flat. Just to kind of go through it, it's set in front of you. Some of the things that he is suggesting, and that's shown in this actual budget document that was up on the screen, is no increase for southeast Kansas health appropriations, which is $5,000, no increase for elderly, which is $1,350, no increase for mental health, $5,963, which could potentially be, you could use opioid funds to, in a different fund for that, reduce increase for election of $5,000, the decision made last week of the employee benefits, $68,000, and reduce sheriff wages, the amount that they've requested by $22,000, and corrections, taking $100,000 out of their budget, the last three years they've had, and that's that last page on there shows what's been remaining in the corrections budget. So basically, you're just shifting that up to the sheriff and taking it from corrections. So that's how you get to that lovey flat with what Brandon's recommendations are. And I can go through individual funds if that's what you would like.
Yes, I would like that, please.
So where do you want to start? Where would you like to start?
Yes, like this page here.
General fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go right down the list for me, please. I can make myself some notes.
So general detail. This is where we are so far. Yeah, that was from last time. We've made some changes within internally into the budget, so, sorry, I had to get over here. Tell me when you want me to move forward.
Okay, for me, anyway.
So that there in orange, you can see that's where we took the $5,000 off for, in the general fund for the health board. And then the last time, we talked about taking it off the elderly, so that's why I took that off there, too.
Now, I know it'll be up to next commission, but did you leave the $50,000 in for the longevity pay?
Yes.
Twenty twenty five?
It is built in individually to every fund.
Okay, you already did.
Yes.
Okay, you did it that way. That makes sense.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. That's it for...
So that would be that 50, that's from this year? Okay, I got you.
Yep.
Seventy-three. So really contingency cash or cash, we counted cash, we still have that.
The seventy-three that you guys is a discretionary for you, yes.
But we couldn't move it to a cash fund just as easy.
Yes.
We wanted to.
Yep.
That's seventy-three now, okay. Now, do you still have built in?
And that's for 2024.
Yeah.
That's not for 25.
Do you still have 250,000 cash reserve built in the general?
Yes.
Okay.
That is built in. I'm going to highlight it for you.
Do you still have the 200,000 built in employee benefits cash reserve?
Yes.
And the 30,000 in the weeds?
Yes.
Not count the wage, with this budget, still staying flat with the mill levy, we're adding 450,000 cash into our reserve.
Right.
Which is a good thing.
Right.
Which speaks highly of that mill levy number, so.
And then noxious weeds. Let's see where, let me get to it.
That 30,000?
Thirty thousand right there.
Happens for that, always the chemical carryover, so.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And just to show you public safety, because that's the one that probably had the biggest change, as you can see, this 883, and that was the information that I sent to you last Friday, based on where people are studying today, overtime for 2023, about where it was, their uniforms are taxable, their longevity pay is taxable, and then whatever bonus they might get at the end of the year. So that should encompass everything. What we did is we just did a shift from the commodities down here in corrections up to wages in the sheriff.
Okay. And that 100,000 you're moving from correctionary up to the sheriff will allow him to give those more of those raises he wants to do.
Well, he's kind of locked in now, because that's, all those raises are currently in there, yeah. Now, if there was, maybe if he had savings somewhere else, but the problem with that is, is if we give raises along the way, our employee benefit funds will start taking hits, and that's not been budgeted for.
Yeah.
Did you talk to the sheriff about this?
No, I did not. This was Brandon's, this was our discussion that we had. But if you look at the last three years on corrections, those, they have not used, the, let's see, in 2021, there was 128,000 remaining in corrections, '22, there was 135,000 remaining in corrections, and in '23, there was 141,000 in corrections.
So are we going to do that to everybody, though? Because, I mean, the clerk's office, treasurer's office, everybody else had money left over last year, if I remember right?
Yes, but there was, we gave reasonings for why that happened.
But we didn't get...
They have one of the smallest budgets in the county.
We didn't let Bill give a reason why he had money left over, though? I'm just asking.
He's welcome to come in. I mean...
Well, it's the last minute.
These are just, these are just suggestions. It's not set in stone. The treas, I can tell you why the clerk had money left over. Actually, the clerk can tell you why she had money left over. That would be even better.
It was, I had two employees for seven months. One, it was just myself for a little over a month, whenever I took office last year, so I will not be able to give back any, any this year, because it was, what, 6,000 less than I received for contractual?
Patty, do you have any? I don't know that you gave back much. I don't know what you gave back.
I don't know, about 16,000 or something. What mine comes from is from my motor vehicle funds from the state, is what they pay us, then at the end of the year, anything we don't use goes back into the general. So everything that is in my budget is definitely spent every year, because I only budget for publications, printing and tax statements, that type of thing.
And we did budget for the Department of Labor increases, actually.
Yes, we did.
We don't have a choice.
Right.
As far as the salaries. Or, how does that work? If they don't work overtime, they could be hourly, but we don't want them hourly.
No, most of your people that, that have gotten this are salaried people. There was one, I think there was three instances where they made them hourly, so basically not going to allow overtime. Your elected officials, I talked to the Department of Labor out of the Kansas City Office, and they said if they're working a 40-hour work week, they're doing an administrative role, then yes, they would be subject to that. If you want to take them to hourly, you run the risk of paying a lot of overtime, because I think Patty's here till all hours of the night.
Or sometimes, yeah.
Yes. I know Jennifer has been. So, I mean, you could do that.
Yeah, I think we're a pretty good salary, I think, south, anyway, speaking for one commissioner, but. You roll that back up, please?
Uh-huh. Where do you want to go? Do you want to go to?
All the way back up to where it started the commission's budget?
Okay, let me go back to the general. That's a different fund. I don't know why it did that. Hang on.
So you budgeted the same amount?
Mm-hmm.
Thinking maybe there'll be two more elected?
I was not given any direction, so I just took what was always on there.
Brandon mentioned that, cutting their salaries and half.
Mm-hmm.
And that would still cover that number if there was five at half rate what we get today, correct? Is that what you're thinking?
Correct, yeah, but then I decided not to do that with those two guys coming in.
You're going to raise your budget then?
Because we've got a budget for what we make right now.
Right, three of them, but not five, yeah.
If the voters decide to go to three, then I will convince those other two guys to go and take the pay cut to cover the minimum charges.
I don't think five...
I would like to make the suggestion that since we're moving off of the state's insurance, health insurance plan, and we're going to the private, pay for our own, we no longer now have to offer it to the commissioners because of the insurance. So I'm going to request that we don't offer it to the commissioners after the first of the year, so.
Yep.
And that'll save us some money, so.
Yeah, probably sixteen a year, maybe, something like that. All the benefits, I'm guessing, but.
Yeah.
Okay. The county clerk, that would give you three and a half people, count yourself, Susan?
Uh, no. Yes, yes.
Okay.
It would.
Roll it for me, please.
Sorry, I had to get my cursor in the right spot.
It's a little slower for old people, please. And that was a raise, an increase for the county attorney. They need to add two positions. Okay, roll it one more time, please. All right, one more time. Okay. Gentlemen, questions you have for Susan? I mentioned to Susan, last week, she had said putting 30-some thousand in the clerk's fund, in case the commission chooses to contract help for the budget in 2025, and I suggested that goes in the commission fund, because they'll be the ones spending that, not the clerk.
It's not the full 30. It is, it'd be less her contractual, what she's always had. And Jennifer, didn't you say it got cut last year and a half? Was it your contractual commodities?
It was, I believe contractual went from 9,000 to 3,000 last year.
To 4,000. So she would ask that 9,000 be left in that, I think.
Okay, and how much does that move over? I don't remember what the total was.
So that would move 26,550.
Okay. You guys have a problem doing that?
You want it to move to commission?
Yes, please. However, the commission decides who they're going to hire and with their budget, go forward, so. I don't have any more questions. Brandon?
I've kind of just been working on it, so you guys can...
Oh, I've been working on it, too, for essentially starting, a little folder here. Clifton, discussion?
I'm not, I mean, I'm not going to vote yes on this budget, but that's fine. I don't, you know, it can pass two to three, or two to one. I'm not going to take that much from the sheriff's office department, that much.
So we're taking 20,000 less than his request? Is that what the sheriff's getting, 21?
Yeah, you're shifting, well, you're really taking 120, because you're shifting, you're shifting that from corrections up.
Right, but the correction always has 100 and some extra, but they don't, that's, that's a big number, to have to carry over every year, so.
It doesn't have to vote, it doesn't have to pass three, no, I'm just not, I'm going to vote yes on this budget, so.
Okay. Brandon, any more discussion? What are you going to do?
I like my budget.
I think with Department of Labor increases, we have to give and move that correction money over, and I see what Clifton's saying, but that's 100 and some thousand that's laying there every year that doesn't need to be laying there, if the sheriff can utilize it. It looks like a good budget to me, so. I like the mill levy at 59, flat. What can we do, change, Clifton, to make you like it besides that sheriff deal? Anything?
Cut everybody.
Cut everybody.
If you're going to cut the sheriffs, I would just cut everybody.
But you're not really cutting him, you're transferring it from one department.
It's not being transferred, it is being taken out of the budget. Hundred thousand, 120,000 dollars is being taken out of the budget, his budget. It's not transferring to another fund, it's being taken out.
He's actually getting the same amount that he got, he's actually getting more than what he's got in the last two years. He got two point, he got 2,085,961 the last two years, and then this year, he's getting 2,204,165.
So he is getting more funds.
So he is getting more.
Because of that transfer.
Yes. Now, if he wants to go back in and reallocate, you know, how he does things, he can do it between corrections and the sheriff's office, but there has been that much left over every single year.
And what if there isn't this year?
He's still getting an increase.
And how many years has it been there? Three, you said? Is that what that sheet showed? He had extra?
Yeah, three years, yeah.
If you're not going to, I'm going to.
All you have to do is, if you're okay with this one, all you have to do is allow, just make a motion to allow me to publish it for a hearing on the 16th at 5:30. And then at that point, that gives the public an opportunity to come in and talk about the budget, and then that's when you actually approve it.
And what date will the hearing begin?
The 16th of September. So you're just giving me authorization to publish it in the paper.
I'll make the motion to publish this budget for a hearing on the 16th of September, public hearing for 16th of September.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I think this is wrong, and I would like Jason, if he's here, to put that in the paper.
But, I'm sorry, why do you think it's wrong for, for him? You just gave him 50,000, and I know that we need him. I love the sheriff's department, everybody there, but I have a very low budget, and I make sure that it works. I'm here before anybody else, and I, you know, you're, you're, I'm sorry, you're acting like I lost and I don't care, I'm going to do it this way.
Laura, I don't have to explain myself of why I'm not going to vote for a budget. I'm not going to vote for a budget that takes money from the sheriff's department. You have a problem with that? I don't know. Did I ask to take money from you? I did not.
You said cut everybody.
Well, everybody across the board, then.
And he mentioned last week or so, he didn't want to cut the sheriff, so.
I mean, it is my right as a commissioner to not have, not want to cut the sheriff's department.
Okay.
That's nobody else's business, that's my business. I don't have to explain that to anybody.
Okay. Any further discussion? Got a motion and second, all in favor? Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes two to one. Vance Eden, sir. No, I'm sorry, public comments first. Thank you, Mr. Quick.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, we better, hadn't we? I know, I get in a hurry. I need, I need to put my glasses on. Have you make that motion? We need to make a motion to...
I'd like to motion for first, consent agenda, approval of minutes from August 19th, approval of accountable total of 382,295.49 cents, and approval of payroll total of 292,000, 292,017,26.
Second, with discussion?
Got a motion and a second with discussion. All right, open to discussion?
On the first, there was seven, approximately $700 spent between Sharkey's and the flower shop, which is, I find interesting, I think the public should know that, out of the diversion fund, of note, of all things.
Which department?
It's the county attorney's office, I believe, but if we're going to be trying to save money, $700 probably shouldn't have been spent at Sharkey's and Sunshine Boutique and Flowers by Leanna. That is pretty interesting. Page seven and page 26, if you want to look at it.
I saw it.
So, I thought the public should know that. There was $700 spent by this county at Sharkey's and the flower shops.
Do you want to pull those? Jennifer, can we just pull those for review, or?
They've already been paid.
They've already been paid, so there's no reason to pull them. Okay, any more discussion? Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, public comments?
Clint Walker.
Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, you heard my announcement last week, how we're going to conduct ourselves professionally on both sides of the, both sides of the table, including me, including you. Okay, go for it, sir.
All right, I'll try to contain myself. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you.
What I was going to discuss, and I'm not sure if you're aware of it, and you may be aware of it, there's a transmission line that's coming our way from Allen County, and that transmission line, right now, they haven't used it, and it hasn't really been mapped out. It's going to go through Bourbon County.
At the BlackBerry?
Next stop.
Next stop, okay.
And bottom line is, is the bad thing about it is, is this company has been declared a public utility. So they can go through and just willy-nilly, you know, they, I don't really like eminent domain, but they can do that. And that was said in an article, nice article on the Isle of Paganos on that. So it's just food for thought.
Interesting.
That the commissioners, I thought you might need to know or want to know that.
Now, did they declare a public utility by signing a contract with Everyear or someone, I wonder?
It happened in 2022, and that would be a state then.
Yeah. Just curious, yeah.
Yeah. And the reason I bring issues like this up is there's people that does not want the Pike Reservoir to come in. If they don't watch their state guys, next thing you know, they have a permission up there, and they can use eminent domain, you know, don't count. The last one I'm going to leave with, it's been proposed by the federal government, one of our senators, that they're going to come across Kansas and put a power quarter across Kansas, five miles wide, and they're going to use eminent domain, so they're going to take thousands of stuff with it.
This is the federal government?
Yes. Feds is doing this one. They haven't been dreamed yet, but they had some feedback there. Oh, by the way, that power company is coming through here. The towers are going to, the poles are 110 feet high in height. So I'm just letting you know. And the easement is 150 feet, I believe, wide.
Pretty big.
Yes. So I'm just letting the public and Commissioner know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, Clifton?
Brent. Brent Smith.
Evening, Brent.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good, you?
Hey. It's hot today. You should have had some bottled water out here, something for everybody. Rags to wipe themselves off with. My name's Brent Smith, I live out at Redfield. I'm in District One, of course, so a couple questions. Well, first, I want to thank Eric Bailey and his crew. Him and Dustin, they've done a hell of a job this spring, from everything, from the flooding to everything. And like we talked in here one day, people can't get in a big rush, because it's not going to all end in six months or whatever, take a year to, year better to do everything correctly than that deal. But I do want to thank them over the effort they put forth in that. They put a lot of hours in. But my question is on graders. Like, I have a young man, not a young man, I have a gentleman. They're just like, just like other jobs in Bourbon County and stuff, there's nobody waiting in line for a job, but graders, like my grader, he's been out for a month. And this dude has illness in his family. What are we going to do to cover things like that? The other grader in another part of the county, he was working on the blacktop. I mean, there we should cut, that's why I asked Eric.
Have you asked Eric?
No, I was going to ask him when I was here.
Okay.
I could ask him at Christmas dinner or something, but I mean, I was going to ask him once here.
Or Thanksgiving.
Yes, or Thanksgiving, but I don't know. Is Eric here?
Eric, you still here, Eric?
No, but, I mean, like, is there a plan? I mean, you used to have eight, and then they cut to six, and, I mean, like you said before, there's over 1,000 miles of county road to cover in Bourbon County.
A lot of miles.
So, that was my, my question. Like I said, the gentleman does, you know who I'm talking about. His family, he's had family health problems, so he's been off the road and been out off and on, so that was just concern of mine. I feel sorry for those guys. I mean, they don't get enough respect as it is anyway. More people disappreciate them than appreciate them, so, but they do a heck of a job.
Sure Eric has a plan?
We do have a plan, and I'll be more delighted to share with you. And I'll answer a couple of them for you there, Brent. On the one that's helping us with the asphalt, we had a transmission go out of one of our blades, so while it's being repaired, we're rotating between the spare blade that we have with not only the person that hises went out, but the other one that the air conditioner's went out, so they're splitting that. Also, we're trying to pull our different blade operators in, cover a little bit more area. As we know, it's pretty dry right now. We don't want to be out blading all that much. We want to be more working on ditches. So we're trying to bend but don't break mentality, try and cover more area with what we have for time being, and we're working with, and I'm not going to go into the personnel matter, but we are working with the, the individual that is, that is off. He's not off extended, extended period of time, but he's off a little bit right now, so.
Thank you.
But that's kind of our plan. We're bending but don't break, but we're going to try and cover everything the best we can with the people that we have.
Well, that's, that's time of year. If you're not careful, you'll do more damage on the road with the motor vehicle. You will do good. You break that crust.
Right, so.
Okay.
That was my question. I was just talking to you. Oh, yeah, you know, that was a question I just had there on that. Economic growth, I had a question about that. I heard the city backed out of Ready the other day.
I read that.
Is there a potential that the city, I mean, I really think the city and county need to work on economic growth as a group effort, because if it's Fort Scott, economic growth, I know where it's going to be based. It's going to be based in Fort Scott, it's not going to be based in Union Town, Robinson, you know, any of those other, Mapleton, whatever. It's not going to be based in any of those communities. So I really think that economic growth still needs to be a joint effort between the county and the city in some fashion. So, and I don't know what the, what you guys' plans are in the near term, or the short term, or the long term, but we need to have something, because, you know, the more people you got living in Bourbon County, the more people, the more opportunity you got to spread that tax base out, and you get more opportunity, you got to bring people to your community. This helps out the community all the way together.
Can I share a short story with you?
I'll take a short story.
I was told today, pretty good resource, that a company was coming to Fort Scott, and they've read the hate on the internet the last ninety days, and they said the day wouldn't step into Fort Scott.
I think any community is the same.
So I guess what we have to do is all work together, be positive.
Yes.
Because those folks said, uh-uh, I don't need that. So I guess we all need to work together, be positive, and try to get new business here.
Well, we all want new business here, and I think a lot of companies, what about like housing? I mean, that's never addressed anymore. There's nothing addressed about new housing coming to Bourbon County. I mean, it's great that we have all sorts of remodel units, and remodel this, and remodel that. You can only remodel so many houses.
That's true.
But we need some house, I mean, I can't tell you what the left side of houses, probably the ones out there on, on Eighteenth and Horton, where those houses are in that little section north of the Juco, where the last new house is put in Bourbon County.
I can share with you that I'm on a housing board, and they're continuing looking for developers, and I've met with one. I know Commissioner Beth has met with one. I don't know about Brandon, but housing discussion is going on. There's that profit margin's a problem right now.
Exactly, I understand that. I mean, it just needs something, something we can work on as, you know, as community or whatever, because we do need that, because if you don't have housing, you won't get a job here. And like I said, you know, you talk about negatism. I mean, we're in a small community. They just don't hear it in the big communities, because you've got so many numbers to spread it out. If you hear it here, it's because you're in a small community of 14,000 with 12,000 on the voting roll, which makes no sense. But anyway, but we're working on that problem. What about, last question of the day, and I'll leave with that. Mary Pemberton gave you a zoning package that being implemented in LaBette County at this time. Have you taken the opportunity to view that or resource, read it over, or any of you guys, or where do we stand on that, or what's the plan, or?
I reviewed it, but I'm real familiar with zoning.
Yes.
We're the city all those years, as a zoning administrator. That is a very, I had a gentleman at Walmart today that lives on the county line, and his comment was, I don't know if I like zoning or not, but I don't want the residents of the city of Fort Scott to decide what I do in rural Bourbon County, and that's... of Fort Scott to decide what I do in rural Bourbon County, and that would happen. They get the vote too, because they pay county taxes. So, it's kind of a gumbo mess, kind of.
Well, I understand, but it can be, it can be regulated in some fashion, you know, like agriculture is one way.
It can be, but also, and I know, I've said this before, and a lot of people must not agree, zoning is just not a flip of a hat.
No.
You come up with a comprehensive plan on what direction you want the land used to go in Bourbon County. You develop that plan in booklet form, then you hire a zoning administrator.
Sure.
You, you need probably eighty-five to hundred minimum to start up with his salary or her salary, plus mapping and books. So, I know a previous commissioner said four hundred thousand. I believe I could start it for a hundred if I was their employee, just my experience, but that something has to be addressed. And I don't know what these two gentlemen think about it, but it probably won't happen in my term.
Exactly, I understand that, but I was just, I knew she'd given that to you. I didn't know if you had taken the opportunity to review it and go over it.
I have.
Because you made it that point at that time, you were going to get back with, on that deal, so. But I think, you know, like in our community, somebody made a good point the other day. Eventually, you'll have Kansas City people here. They come out of Johnson County's, I bet you it's zoned.
Oh, guaranteed.
So, you know, I mean, we'll bet, eventually, we'll have to have that in our community for some reason, just because we'll have more Johnson County influence in this area.
Yeah, and it's not that hard to do. It just takes some groundwork, some literature, some training.
Sure.
Money. It's just whatever, if the next commissioner wants to put it on ballot, or they have the power just possibly, I think, but don't, probably, just to enact it and get the ball rolling. I'm not sure.
Yeah. Well, I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Bye, else Clifton. Okay. Now, Mr. Eden, finally, I called you, I only called you twice. How are you, sir?
I'm good. So, yeah, so I'm here, obviously, the Bourbon County Industrial Solar Committee's been meeting. I think that was the first week of July. And so, I think you have, I think Jennifer put in the board packet those recommendations, if I didn't make those copies. And then, yeah, so we met for eight weeks or seven weeks or whatever that was there. And most of those meetings are between an hour and a half and three hours long. So, yeah, people have invested a lot of that committee, invested a lot of the time. And I guess, first of all, I hope that you appreciate those people putting in that time. Obviously, it's a complicated issue with lots of feelings in the public about it. You shouldn't be surprised in a democracy, it was a complicated issue among the committee members that had lots of different feelings about it. And, yeah, so the recommendations I'm bringing you or the committee brought to you, it's not my, mine, but, you know, those things are things that were decided in split decisions primarily. And I guess we don't want you to perceive that that was done flippantly. We just ended, I think, at a point where we thought that that was the consensus that we arrived at, I guess. So, I don't know if you want me to talk that through here, or if you guys just want to, you've obviously had a chance to read that and then read those.
I've read it myself. It's up to these other two.
Pages of comments. We did allow each member of that committee to attach a separate document that maybe included their thought of the experience or those thoughts. And, and when we, none of us read those, or I don't believe so. All those just went to Jennifer.
I would like you to mention the recommendation.
Okay, yep. So, the recommendation as far as setbacks, that was, had a four-three vote. So, that was brought, as the recommendation of the commission was, a fifty-foot setback along existing roads. And then, that fifty-foot setback, you would include two rows of coniferous trees having staggered spacing. Obviously, that's to, to limit view. That the trees will be five or six foot tall at the time of planting, that those trees will be planted at the beginning of projects. And that any existing trees along that fifty foot, inside that fifty feet, so any existing trees on the property line would stay there. And then additional trees would be used to fill in empty spaces. The, in regards to adjacent properties, that is the same existing building sites is the terminology we used. It says, in regards to trees, trees can be removed if there, if there is an adjacent solar project. To do so, a signed agreement must exist between both landowners. The setback can be waived if there is an existing solar project or a newly signed project, and that a landowner, that adjacent landowner waives the setback. And then it asks, it says for any setback to be signed, that signed agreement needs to be tied or filed with the title of the land impacted. Also, neighboring landowners can sign a waiver to allow setbacks if they don't obviously have a concern. Last, on that regarding setbacks, a couple of other things. And, and part of what we were tasked to come up with was a bit of a moving target. I know that not everyone knew exactly what that we, we wanted or from the commission. So, initially, you asked us to consider setbacks. Obviously, there were lots of other conversations around that that became a part of dialogue. So, we did include some of that other information in that recommendation. I'll just briefly touch on that, again, just because it's part of what we included. So, fire risk was a conversation during a lot of those meetings. And so, it asked that the industrial solar company develop a strategic plan with the rural fire department and also have an evacuation plan in place in case of a fire. If there is an evacuation plan, the fire, the local fire department would be the party to decide when it's safe to return. And it also mentions if monitoring, monitoring equipment is needed, the solar project owner would be the one to furnish that. And then on the back of that, we also talked about enforcement. Obviously, we don't have zoning, so that adds some complexity to that about what part of these recommendations can or can't we enforce. So, again, there was a split decision on that. But the, I'll just read it. It says, "The ability to enforce for potential recommendations that are adopted by the commission came up several times. For this reason, a motion was made and approved at the August twelfth meeting by a vote of four to three to recommend to the commission to pursue zoning related to commercial and industrial uses." And then there was also quite a bit of dialogue about communication and making sure that people had information when possible. And so, there was a seven-o vote that the commission consider or hold a public forum, that they might be able to answer questions or receive questions, or I guess, we don't want to do that. But I think, as we know from, you know, ongoing conversation, there's still a lot of people that are trying to process information and want information. And so, I guess our encouragement is to, however you see fit, look for an opportunity to increase stakeholder engagement. So, I'm not the only one here. Samuel Trans here, John Eden and Gene Tucker are back there. And who else is out there? Those right there around the corner. So, again, I'm presenting this today, but you're welcome to ask me any questions or any of those other. And I don't want to speak for them if I'm listening.
I understand.
I don't want them to interrupt.
I'd like to start by thanking the committee for all hours they put in. And I know it was a lengthy and healthy discussion at times, what I was told. And four-three shows that vote, kind of what we thought maybe when we started committee, but we wasn't for sure. But I do appreciate, as the chairman, that what everyone has done for this. Now, not speaking for the other two. I would like to see a little more setback around the house than fifty feet, but those trees are important. But I think us three needs to have a little work session and talk about what we might be able to ask.
Jim, that setback actually is, would be fifty feet from the property line?
Yeah.
So, that's actually going to be kind of a moving target from a house. Most houses are going to be a hundred, two hundred feet from the property line.
That could be a hundred and fifty feet real easy from the house.
Sure, sure.
Okay, okay. Well, that's real important because.
And then also those developers, part of that, the window that, those developers talked about in their properties, there would be a road that would circumvent those properties. And so, I'm kind of speaking for Sparky, but that was part of his understanding. You know, if you did, again, from a fence line, you have trees and then a fence, and then, and then there's likely to be a road, a service road, and then panels. And so, that, I guess, we know that sounds like a smaller number. And I would say everyone in here probably has a slightly different number, you know, if we all just listed exactly what our number is. But again, that was the number that I guess received for votes.
And when we have a work session, I have had some discussions with Candace Fire Marshal as well as the Candace Fire Rescue Training. So, I know where we're headed as far as the fire part. I'm comfortable with that. I don't want to disclose it just yet because I want them guys to get more involved and saying what's going to happen. But we're going down a pretty good path as far as fire protection. I'm comfortable with that.
I'm glad to hear that. I know that Sparky had a lot of passion about the fire part of that, and he had done a lot of work and conversations.
Someone, yes.
Oh, yeah, for sure. So, I'm Samuel Trans. I'm fairly new to the area. I was one of the board members. And Vance is correct. It was pretty, there was a lot of good opinions. People were very passionate about the whole thing. The, from my take of it, we didn't want to, we didn't want to give you concrete setbacks. We believe that that's, my opinion, because I believe that's your function or the function of a planning committee. Okay? We are not functional experts when it comes to zoning. I understand how zoning works, being in the construction trade. But I felt that that was something that the municipality should come up with, okay? For me, the zoning wasn't just for the panels. The panels are the least, is the least of your worries. It's their modules, okay, because of the fire, the prospect of catching fire. But after our meeting, I went back, I had time to go back and, and take a look at some more stuff. So, essentially, you're going to have a battery entry storage system, a BES, B-E-S-S. And those BESs are going to be on at least two sites. It's going to be on the Doral site, the Tennesse Creek, and I believe the Hinton Creek one has one too. So, I went back and I looked at that number. That's 800 megawatt hour. So, to keep that in perspective, a single battery cell, just a single battery cell, is 350 watt hour, okay? Tennesse Creek is installing 800 million watt storage unit. So, when they tested a fourteen-cell BES, that thing burned and released toxic and smoke gases into the testing chamber, okay? And it burnt quite, quite bad. But then I went and did some more research, and in 2023, the Swiss government did a test because there's a bunch of tunnels going through Switzerland. So, they said, okay, what happens to three vehicles, three cars, three Tesla cars burnt inside the tunnel? Well, wow, it, let me get to my notes. I'm sorry. It was kind of impromptu. They found they took the water from the fire extinguishing process, and they tested that water. And quote, "The heavy metal nickel cobalt manganese were detected in very high acid soluble concentration at thirty-six milligrams per liter. These levels exceeded the limit for drinking water in Switzerland, where they are defined by a factor of 700 to 1800. The limits for introducing fluid into the sewage system for industrial effluents in Switzerland are exceeded by a factor of 20 to 70." Now, that's just one study. I found other ones, but for the sake of my paper to you, I didn't include all of those. I'm just giving you food for thought. That's all this is. So, to keep things in further perspective, a Tesla Model Three vehicle's 50 kilowatt hours. They use either 50 or 82. So, all you got to do is look at YouTube, figure out, and you'll see how bad a Tesla fire burns. So, an 800 megawatt hour equals 800,000 kilowatt hours. Divide that by 82. That comes out to 9,756 Tesla cars. That's on one person's property. So, you can imagine the fire. And then some more of research. There was a BES fire in upstate New York. New York had three BES fires last year in 2023. That one, that last one, that caused the governor to give a, basically, an emergency proclamation about smoke and fumes and all that stuff. That fire burned for four days for one BES unit. So, my question is, while I embrace the technology, I am very conservative and very concerned as far as like how we implement said technology. I personally believe that we need to really slow down a little bit, take a look at the technology and figure out a way to mitigate. I'm not saying do away with it, and I'm not saying the landlords shouldn't have their right to do what they do with their land. That's all I'm saying. I'm saying mitigate that. Because this fire, these fire departments, I mean, they're volunteers. So, who's going to train them? You have, you know, full-time here in town. Who's going to train them? The fire in, in Overland Park, the fire department finally put it out, had a foam sprayer. Can we afford a foam sprayer? Is Doral or Next Era or Advance, any of those guys going to buy us a foam sprayer? I don't know. I don't have those answers. But my doc, my paper, my talking paper is included with your, your, your package. So, you know, I just urge the, the committee to just take a look at everything in totality, because I know you guys are trying to do the right thing by the people. And sometimes that means you have to take a step back or at least slow it down enough to a point where you, you're looking at things objectively.
Right.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so again, I hope, I hope you've taken a chance to read those comments. Obviously, just like Samuel shared, you know, all of us have slightly different takes on, on, you know, some of the safety stuff and some of the health stuff and whatever. I'd encourage you, there is a lot of information out there. I mean, solar panels, I think the first produced solar, commercially produced solar panel was 1958, and the first commercial solar field was 1985. And so, that was when I was born. So, there is information out. There have been studies. There have been advancements. There have been ones that have went poorly. And all that information, not even all that information, there's a lot of information that exists. And I think, you know, I think the committee spent a lot of time trying to become somewhat functional experts, but that's really not within our skill set to know all the things and know, to know an exact perfect recommendation. So, I don't know. Any other questions or thoughts or needs you have from us?
No, I'll speak for myself. Now that we have some setbacks, I want to work with this commission here to review those and see if we want to add anything to it. Then my intention is to take those setbacks to the solar panel companies. And that time, we need to have discussion on safety concerns.
Sure.
And address them. I know what the fire marshal's told me, and I know what the Kansas training facility's told me today, but I'm not ready to share that. But we've, we've got several things to address, and I've been told there are years of being buildings. So, I think we've got a little time to meet with them.
The information that I've been sharing, which maybe is or isn't accurate, is November of '25 would be the first part of construction in the county. Q1 of '26 would be the next company. And then I don't think Advanced Power yet has a solid timeline.
Myself, I want to understand and I want proper safety items out there. And I believe we can get there.
Of course.
I believe we can, working with the solar panel people. I've had very little conversation with them, but what I've had, very, very cooperative. They're not intention to hurt anybody's family. It's not their intention to hurt anyone in this town. So, I know they'll cooperate with us if we can, any way possible, to address our safety concerns. And I will share with them what the fire marshal has shared with me, et cetera. We'll go from there, or myself. Now, these two can do, they can bless me to go meet with them, but we, we need to have a little work session ourselves first and get on the same table. It might be two to one, might be three to all, but.
Sure. Brandon or Clifton, anything from you guys?
No, I'm just constantly making phone calls and talking to people. I, I, I reached out to a couple of solar companies and gave them the Fire District Three, Fire District Three Fire Chief's contact information is as of today. None of them contacted me. And that was over a month ago that I gave them that information. And so, you know, and I've met with them, and they're like, we're willing to do whatever, but when you don't talk to the man, he's got to train his guys.
Well, Brandon, my understanding, when they decide to come, get a little closer construction date, they'll bring a group of people here to train everybody at once. They won't do just be three in Fort Scott.
You should still be calling the guy that, I mean.
Well, they will, I think. I've been told when they're ready to start planning the dates.
Have they had any conversation about fire training?
I understand your points, okay. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you to the committee for all your hard work, so, thank you. And we will be having a work session before long. I don't know exactly when, but the sooner the better probably, so. Okay. Jennifer Hawkins.
So, next Monday is Labor Day, and the courthouse will be closed. So, I'm checking to see if you want to hold a meeting that night.
No, no staff.
Okay, that is perfect. I just wanted to make sure I'll get that in the newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, hello, Mark McCoy. How are you? Commission comments. Let me find the numbers I was looking at. I know this commission has to decide what we're going to do economic development wise going forward with supporting Ready or something. And I know we're going to be low on cash reserves this year because our commitments to some health companies, which will lower our cash reserve. But I think we have 63,000 left in our contingency fund that we could move to Ready or we can move it to cash reserve. But we need to work as a group, decide what direction we want to go, supporting Ready. But we need to work as a group, decide what direction we want to go, supporting Ready and economic development. I know the city pulled out, but I don't know what the city's plan is just yet. I did have a discussion with the city manager regarding that, and he's still in the planning stages, so he didn't share a lot of information with me, what they're doing.
Well, I think it's fairly evident, they, they put 130,000 back.
Yeah.
So I would say they're hiring somebody.
I think so. I think so. But I, he wouldn't say that, but I think you're absolutely right. But we need to, as a board, decide...
So the, the money we put back at the first of the year, did you, I mean, I guess I can't remember where the 87,700 was spent, was that, went to wages? Or the increases at the shares in the EMS, or?
Forty went to solar conservation, out of our contingency fund.
There was way more than...
And it was 10 went to Rodeo.
Yeah.
I think 30, 30 went to EMS, 40, 40 EMS, and 50 to the sheriff. So I think there's 60, I can't, I seen earlier, but 62 or 63,000 we have left in our contingency fund. We could spend on economic development for the remainder of this year, but we didn't budget anything for 2025, so that's really going to put the next commission in a bind, also, looking for money. But it looks like 2025, the cash reserves are coming back in a healthy fashion, so that's good. So, anyway, that's something we got to decide, because I know Ready's just out there hanging, and Mr. McCoy brought it up last week.
I apologize for being here late. I assumed that the regular commission meeting would start approximately at 5 o'clock, and I was going to sign up to speak under public comments, so...
You guys have a problem in speaking down?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, take the podium, sir. We changed, we changed the time on you, and we only told about half of you. No, we did, we told everybody. Good evening.
My name is Mark McCoy, and many of you, if not all of you, know that I am here on behalf of Ready Regional Economic Development Incorporated. I would, I would just like to take as short as possible time to condense some information to you to talk about what Ready has done and has been working on in 2024 and in 2023. And these different items, I will try to do, and they're not necessarily in chronicol, chronological order, but much work was done on the Pavilion Project for the Healthier Bourbon County Action Team, which had gone to a stopping point. Ready has played a crucial role in reinvesting in the Crest Building and by helping to find new owners for this building in downtown Fort Scott. Another notable achievement would be securing a $400,000 grant for the Eagle Block Building. I don't know if you folks in this room are aware of this, however, when that building collapsed, within 72 hours, Ready, specifically Rob Harrington, was the key lead person in regards to finding out, securing SHPO, I call them SHPO, HIPPO, and HARPO grants that were available to help the city recover from that devastating activity that took place. In addition to that, improving previous grant application to receive the Horton Street Project, which as you're well aware of, is going on now. This project was for almost $1 million and is a crucial piece to moving our vehicles and folks around Bourbon County and the city of Fort Scott specifically. Bringing in buyers of the professional building, which is located adjacent to the hospital. I don't know if folks here know that that building was up for sale. Those don't happen by themselves, you don't just go out and, and call any one of our local real estate folks, because it's commercial and it's not the same thing. Ready has worked on the facilitation and transition of ownership for the McDonald's Hall Building, which again is an infrastructure downtown development, which involves an incubator kitchen, and much efforts were involved there in securing funding and grants. Efforts to reestablish critical services in Bourbon County, including the facilitation and attraction of Freeman Hospital. Collaborating with the Bourbon County Commissioners, with folks from the city of Fort Scott, with the Kansas Renewal Institute, with JG Health, and state agencies navigating complex regulations and financial challenges to ensure the services are substantially for the long term. I, like you, live in this community, and I am concerned about the long term. Pardon me, I'm sorry for that. Diligently marking the Value Merchandiser Building, again, I don't know if you're aware of this, citizens, and I don't know if the newspaper is here. Recently, I was misquoted in the newspaper in, in a recent article. The Value Merchandiser Building, which many of you again are aware that Value Merchandiser and the Timken organizations had communicated that they were closing. On day one, Ready, Rob Harrington, engaged with economic development individuals at the State of Kansas to effectively start managing the process of bringing in potential buyers, potential businesses to come to Bourbon County. For what purpose? To provide new jobs for the loss of those jobs, to provide use of those buildings, so that they don't sit there and fall apart. I'm sorry, you can hear some emotion in my voice, because it is truly, let me finish this part. Collaborating on grant applications with the county, city, in regards to Burlington, Northern, and Santa Fe, to fund engineering for a new Jayhawk overpass and the rising and widening of a Third Street underpass. These projects are critical, critical to resolving the issues of emergency vehicle access to the east side of our county when trains block the road. In summary, the last three years, and what's more important to folks here is what's gone on in the last 18 months, substantial progress has gone on in Bourbon County, and we at Ready have been proud to participate in a small way. Working behind the scenes, and truly, for those of you that have not worked in major business acquisitions, and I'd be happy to discuss this with anybody, major businesses do not come into a city or a county unless they're, oh, let's talk about a structure by the name of the Kansas City Chiefs or the Kansas City Royals, which wish to be garnered billions of dollars, if not trillions of dollars, from the citizens and people in an area to bring that business there. We're not talking about a multi-billion dollar project that if taken place, would bring hundreds of thousands of people on a regular basis to the city of Kansas City, Kansas, for a sports activity that takes place, or other things at that park. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. I told you I wouldn't take much time. Ready has taken a significant amount of heat, a significant amount of negative input from many citizens. Not one of those people has called me. I, I know at least three of them personally, and not one of them has called me to, to discuss their significant concerns in whether the leadership of Ready or the progress of projects. I find it, I find it appalling that they feel a need to go out to Facebook and, and to, and to discuss those. And God bless America, we live in a free country where you can get on the public, excuse me, the private ways, airwaves. I guess Facebook is a private airway, wave, and spew whatever you want, and it doesn't have to be true or accurate, like so many of our federal and state individuals. I, I do not believe that that is activities in a local area. Changing subjects, you know, I'm the chairman of the Republican Party, I do not believe that you individuals operate here based on being a Republican or a Democrat. You operate on what is right and proper for the citizens of Bourbon County and the citizens of Fort Scott, which is the largest city in Fort Scott, and people need to be reminded that these cities reside in Bourbon County, and they're active participants in the success or failure of Bourbon County. With that, I apologize for taking so much time. I respectfully request that funds be provided to Ready for services provided from January 1 through today for economic development in Bourbon County and in the city of Fort Scott.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Just for the record, we have 120, 30,856 in our contingency fund, and we have 50,000 that earmarked for our longevity bonuses, which means we have 73,856 in our contingency fund, so...
Seventy-three?
Seventy-three, eight, fifty-six, for this budget number here. And that, but that leaves 50,000 for their Christmas retention, or no, retention, longevity, longevity bonus.
Yeah.
That's something to think about, so. And Mark, I agree, we, we got to make some decision going forward with Ready. We all need to let this information soak in and talk about it some more.
It's nothing personal, it's just business. I don't take it personally, I, I take the negative comments personally.
I do too. But you know what...
My problem with being in the public eye.
And I mentioned, I mentioned earlier, you know, on Facebook, people see that, but if you can type it, it's true. And then make there is a true or false. But that goes farther, a little bit farther. You can put anything you want in the newspaper, too, true or false. So, but it's just our society today, I think. If someone believes it is true, to hell with the facts, so, anyway. Thank you. Any more commission comments?
What about this work session you mentioned a few times?
Well, next week's holiday, this, this, about September the 9th, come in early and have a work session regarding solar panel discussion on setbacks.
September 9?
Yeah, is that good for you? On a Monday?
I mean, our meetings are pretty fast, we can just put it on a regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, yes, we don't have to come in early, we can come in at 5:30, and wait everybody to be here.
Yeah.
We can just put it on the September 9th meeting, we're not here next week.
Yeah, we just put it on the meeting, that's fine.
Okay, just put it on the agenda?
I do have a question.
Okay.
What's it take for us to change the speed limit on the road?
We've talked about that before. It's, it's pretty difficult.
Because we got to lower it on Yale Road, or somebody's going to die.
Eric, you still out there?
It's really difficult.
I know, Eric, at one time, we used to get engineer's recommendations.
Yes.
At one time, you want to do that on Yale Road? Get a...
We can just arbitrarily change it, though.
Yeah, we can, without an engineer's study, if we want to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know why we need an engineer, I don't, I don't know why we need an engineer to lower it. Maybe if we was going to go up by Hidden Valley...
You have a problem with just lowering it like Brandon liked to, or you want to study?
I, I want a motion from you to tell me to...
Yeah, yeah, you can't, you can't do it on its own.
No, no, that's what I was saying, all we needed to do in one...
Was it 55 today, or is it 40?
It's 50 or 55, we need to knock it down to at least 45, because this is ridiculous. There's, not that they're going to slow down, but...
If you want 45, make it 35.
Okay.
I'd say make it 25.
It's 40 in front of my eyes, and they're running 82.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's bad. It's bad.
Yeah, make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that Yale Road's speed limit is reduced to 35 mile an hour.
So, so, I want to clarify, Brandon, Yale Road's long.
So from point A to point B is what I need to know?
Yeah, so...
So I would go from, damn it, what's the highway?
31?
Yeah, 31, and then go west of, west of Hidden Valley, the second inch to Hidden Valley.
You could go west...
Are you going to go all the way to County Line?
Or we could go to, we could go to one of the pavement.
Yeah.
Go to the County Line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Need to go up to the pavement, or you could go up...
Yes, I knocked down to 35 from 31 to...
Go up that hill, is that 55, up the hill?
Do you want to go all the way up the hill?
I mean, it's paved before the curve, so make it 35 from 31 to the pavement.
Okay.
Okay, that's part of Brandon's motion, and I will second that.
Got a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric.
We'll get it posted, we'll get it called in. It'll take minimum of two working days, once we call them in, and then we'll get it posted.
Appreciate it, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I mean, the one of their, I guess we're going to do a work session on the solar deals, I mean, we have a public hearing every week. It's called a commission meeting, people can come in and talk, so I don't know. We take another night to do it, but whatever.
Yeah.
On what was that?
Oh, they said, a, a public meeting on the solar panels.
Yeah, I think we need to have a public hearing, but we need to have our work session, and talk about some stuff we're talking about, and then the following week, we'd have a public...
But I'm just, I mean, we, we, I mean, why would we change the night?
This is an honest question, what would be the, what, a public hearing, what would be, what would be the resolve, but except but the haters down there kicking the shit out of us?
Well, I'm just...
Excuse my language.
Hopefully, hopefully, we could get some, some participating people, or people who are on the fence to come in and say that...
On the fence.
You know, to, to speak.
Well, and I understand, I mean, I guess we can get more input on setback, but nothing's going to change in the solar panel world unless you move forward with zoning.
And we, and we need to have a work session about that, too, on what we're going to do, if we're going to do a permit, or...
Well, we can talk quickly about it, I mean, something to think about. The fact of the matter is, is they've came and they've made a substantial step, what's called a substantial step. That's, they have spent money because we are an unzoned county, the landowner and the solar panel companies currently. So the problem is, how do you, again, put the cap back in the bag on the ones that's already here, without, without bankrupting the county? And that, and that's not me, I mean, whether I like solar panels or not, has nothing to do with it. The fact of the matter is, is they've already, they're already here. You can't, in my opinion, you can't retroactively go and say, well, we're kicking you out of the county, without suing, and when we say it's a $200 million liability to the county, I mean, that's not a made-up number, that is a real number, so...
But zoning would help in the future.
It may help, may help in the future, depending on how it's written, but zoning ends up being, I mean, I'm, I certainly don't want somebody telling me how to build a doghouse.
Well, and if we do the zoning, we definitely got to put in steps, so they can't just willy-nilly just two guys decide that they need to add to it, you know what I mean?
Let me share you one thing.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
The zoning will come into the next commission. I'm not going to get tar feathered out there. I made, I just got a few more weeks avoiding getting tar feathered.
I mean, I mean, you got, everybody's going to come in here and say they want zoning. Nobody's going to come in, I mean, I don't know one person personally that I am around that wants zoning, so, I mean...
Well, as I mentioned earlier, the gentleman at Walmart said, well, what's going to happen? We'll put it on the ballot, and then city dwellers were voted in. Yes, sir.
What happens if you just zone act?
You can't.
You can't spot zone. You have to go through a comprehensive plan.
Okay, so we can't spot zone with solar either?
No.
So we're doing industrial, so all you're saying is, in the zoning, all we're saying is, if you come in here and you do anything industrial or commercial, you have to get a building permit, that's it.
That's spot zoning.
You can't do that, you can't just do that.
What we would have to do is comprehensive plan, and you would have agricultural, which is grandfathered, residential, R1, R2, which is duplexes, R3 is multifamily dwelling, and you move right on up to commercial, then industrial. So it's about five or six...
So how, how did Lynn County do zoning the way they did, where all you had to do is just get a building permit? That was the only thing in the book, sir.
Well, building permit has nothing to do with zoning.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, in their zoning rules, that's the only thing you had to do.
So they get a building permit to put something commercial in residential area? So they don't have...
Well, anytime they do anything, any type of construction, they have to get a building permit.
Well, at that time, I'm sure the zoning people, or the building people, they would say, that don't fit in this application of our development plan, and you can't put a Dairy Queen in this residential area, so you're not getting, you're not getting a building permit.
They, they just stopped a business from coming to Lynn County two weeks ago.
No, they stopped solar count...
No, they stopped another business. They stopped a rock quarry from opening up in Lynn County.
So you could be correct 100% parts of building permit, but there's a lot of discussion on zoning before you get that building permit, a land use. It's all, zoning is all about land use, that's what, that's the only thing it means, is land use, so...
I, I believe, sir...
Yeah.
That Johnson County and everybody else from that area is eventually going to migrate south.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, that's just a fact of life. Because, yeah, they're already, yeah, you're right, they're already coming down here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to happen, so either we get ahead of the curve, or we get caught with our skivvies.
But why would we, why do we need to zone them?
Who?
The people from Johnson County. They're going to put... The people from Johnson County. They're going to put in.
You're going to let them build whatever they want, when they want, how they want in the building.
It's their house, their land.
Their house, their land. But then you go to buy that house and that house is not code. Or you go buy that building to start a business and that building's not within code.
So you're talking about enforcing codes, not zoning.
I'm not, sir. I'm just saying in the future, we're talking ten, fifteen years in the future. And now, all I'm saying is you have to have something in the books because you can't, you can't have an empty, a blank sheet of paper and then fifteen years from now, oh my goodness, we should have done something.
So all these houses, the last hundred years have been built to code?
No.
So they shouldn't be, well, no, I mean.
Well, there wasn't.
Bo, how many, I mean, how many houses do you build a year?
Well, the thing is, we need to discuss more zoning. And I don't talk to a lot of people. The ones I do, they're not in favor, but that don't mean there's fifty that's not in favor. That are in favor, I didn't talk to. So I'm not going to say. But it's not just industrial. It's, it's zoning.
Right.
You know.
I'm not in favor of telling you what to do.
Right.
If you want to do ag, you want to do something that doesn't bother the neighborhood, that's perfectly fine. I'm just saying on the industrial.
Initial zoning map would be, everybody would be grandfathered what you are today. You've got a house there, you're, you're R-one residential one, you have an apartment house, you're R-three, you're grandfathered in. Now you go to make some changes, then you might have, on like an R-three, you'd have to meet the fire marshal's requirements and things like that because of multifamily dwelling apartment house. Agricultural is grandfathered. So, I mean, it's, it's not a, it would take years to see zoning start taking shape out there.
So in this.
The gentleman here might build a big apartment house out there. We'd have the zoning. Just to protect the people.
The solar, the existing solar contracts would be grandfathered in.
Yes.
But you would still have a zone.
Yeah.
For future.
Yeah, they would be grandfathered in industrial. They would get that classification on day one on the zoning map by the zoning director and a zoning board, not a board committee. It's, it can be done. I mean, it's just the direction the public wants to go.
And you're assuming the guy that's going to look at them houses knows how to build a doghouse too, by the way.
Well, we, we had, we had a guy coming.
Wrong on that, Bo?
Code enforcer. He said that Fort Scott didn't enforce codes.
The city of Fort Scott?
Yeah. So you have codes and you don't enforce it. So you have to, to Mr. Betts points. Yeah, I get that, but the point is that we're talking about industrial.
Well, I don't know. I know the group over, I believe they intend to enforce codes. And I know the fire chief will enforce codes. And I know the zoning administrator as well as the code department will enforce codes. I believe they will. I believe the city manager will.
Because frankly, Mr. Harris, what my primary concern is right now is not how they lay out the solar panels, not how many solar panels are put in. It's the fire safety portion, the life safety portion. That's my biggest concern.
And I agree with you a hundred percent. That's why I've been on the phone, the fire marshal, Kansas Fire Training Academy. I've been talking to several different people, trying to get this locked down on how to go forward with fire safety. It's not, we're not inventing wheel here. They've done this all before. So we've got people involved. They haven't called these fire chiefs yet because we're not ready to set dates. And maybe they should call and say, hi, I'm John Doe, but they haven't. But when they do come, and again, I've visited the fire chief, city of Fort Scott, he being very cooperative. So they will come and do massive training for everyone. And the people I've talked to so far and the fire marshal, and my next call would be the academy maybe in Maryland. They say these people are the best trainers in the world. That's what they do. They're better trainers than our fire marshal. But anyway, we're going that path. I believe we'll get there. So, my opinion. So, because I don't want anybody hurt over solar panels. I believe that they can be done safely by the people I've visited with. I believe that the fire training people said it can be done safely, but we just got to make sure we get that point A and everybody's on the same page with safety. That's it. So. Anything else, Brandon?
No. I don't think so.
Clifton? Thank you, everyone, for coming. Again, thank the committee for all your hard work. We appreciate it. I apologize using that language a while ago. That's not my character, but I'm just about fed up. So, anyway. Please forgive me for saying that S-word.
Before we.
It's not real bad, but it's, it's not very, wasn't very professional, so.
It's not important, but it is important to the folks in Union Town. This weekend, Union Town has their, uh, their yearly celebration. They do every Labor Day. Old starts, old settlers. There you go. Thank you very much. Old settlers.
Everyone, everyone should attend. That's a big deal.
They have a street dance on Friday night. I don't know what they're doing Saturday. And then Monday is their, is their, their all-day thing.
I heard you got a watching meeting, boys out there.
Be careful out of Union Town this weekend. On Sunday, you're going to have some whole farts out there. It's the fiftieth, uh, we graduated since nineteen seventy-four, so my class will be out there. They'll probably have to bring the law and keep them under control.
Probably, probably.
And they host a very good car show. So if you want to see some really nice old cars.
Again, thank everyone for coming. Again, thank the committee. Thanks for putting up, have your patience. Thank you for your input. So.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We're going to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Honestly, I think that Rob has done a good job. I was worried, I mean, that could capitalize on the Ford project.